About what was added. She's gonna pass it around so individual members take a look at it.
Yeah, the only two people that are still on the committee that were on the committee in 2000 is John Moll and myself. So John would remember everything, too.
What am I remembering? What are you talking about?
This is the building dedication back in 2000.
Me.
Yeah, for the addition. The interesting thing is the all in yellow was part of the addition. So when we say we put on a new addition, this is a long document, it was completed in 2000. It actually did touch multiple areas of the whole, the whole building as it is. So just with something of interest, I found it in my files, Mr. Dukakis was the superintendent at the time, throughout all of that, and passed away last year, the year, last year, I think, or so it does kind of give a little bit of information. But I thought it'd be kind of interesting for people to see when we talk about the addition that we, the big addition, that's what it was.
Thank you, Diane. Second item before we get moving along, you've probably noticed you don't have your Chromebooks on your desk. Supposed having a Wi-Fi problem, so we can't connect the Chromebooks. So we'll be doing voice calls tonight. You know, the AI that? Okay. Alrighty, so we've done the call, the order, the pledge, introduction of guests and visitors. Do we have any visitors we recognize this evening? Seeing none. Public comment at this point in time, if there's any members of the public that like to make a statement, they may do so. The amount of time will be limited to two minutes each. Seeing no one, we'll move on. Item one E, approval of minutes. They have a motion.
For both of us to spend the reading of the minutes.
Mr. Brooks moves the motion. Do I have a second? Tamara seconds the motion. Discussion? All right, seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained?
No.
Mr. Barbara abstains and motion carries. Superintendent Director's report, Superintendent Brown.
Can you hear everybody? Before he starts, I just want to apologize, everybody, for having our meeting starting late in our finance subcommittee. The chair is a really horrible chair. You guys should find somebody else to chair that subcommittee.
Fire him. I think it was the best Belgium we've ever had. So I enjoyed the work of the chair of the committee.
I was wondering where everybody was. I'm like, wow.
All right.
Go quickie.
Donnie, a little help maybe? There we go. All right. So the winning streak continues. Technically, for the fourth year in a row, one of the students from Graphics has won the Skills USA State PIN Award. We had this year, it's Nadia, Nadia from Martoska. We had Madison Perry the year before. And then if you remember, Janelle Remy won it two years in a row in 20, so it would have been 22 and 23, I think, if I'm doing my math correctly. So obviously, the folks down at Graphics do some great work with the kids and everything else. I'm really excited. But you can see the PIN there up in the top right. And so that will be the PIN, the trading PIN that they will have when they go down to Atlanta. And all the kids get the different state pins and everything else. So very exciting. Yes, sir?
Yes. Would it be possible for a student who has done so well in the states that she could explain to us, come here and explain to us what her design is, why she designed it?
I'll absolutely invite her. Yeah.
I would appreciate that.
Yeah, yeah, sure. Definitely. All right. We talked a little bit, we have talked recently about AI and AI policy. You know, one of the concerns is there, there still really hasn't been any guidance at the state level or anything else. But we did want to start taking some steps towards looking at getting a policy going on AI. Diana, myself, a couple others, Donnie, we met with Steve Pettit, his name. He works for a group called Blue Spruce Technologies. Extremely knowledgeable, all knows everything and anything you'd ever want to know about AI and everything else. So we had a good discussion. We talked about how to set up a policy. He suggested where we frame it with three specific ideas focusing on student safety, student ethics, teacher empowerment. Part of that empowerment piece is the coordinators have sent out surveys to teachers in all areas, special ed, vocational academics, to see what are their concerns, what are they looking at. You might not be surprised, you know, surprised me looking at what students are using AI for, you know, it needs his writing help. But what the teachers immediately talked about was, well, we want to have something that will tell us whether or not the kid is cheating and using AI to write their paper or whatever. And it was very interesting because one of the first things Mr. Pettit told us was, looking to find a plagiarism checker is a waste of time. He said, don't even do it. The AI is so good now that the AI can work around it. So trying to focus on that is not, as he said, it's just not worth it. You know, a lot of teachers talk about what the real way is. You look and you see is you can judge someone's writing by the way they traditionally write and everything else. But, so because we enjoyed the conversation and we want to stir that up with the faculty and get some more ideas, next week, Steve will be coming to present to the faculty meeting, talk a little bit about AI, and then we're gonna have him also potentially come back for the PD day in March next month. So, there we go. Oh, there we go. We've launched technically round three, I guess, of our Step Explore program, or is the Step Explore, I should have just put Step Program, this is not Explore, this is the full shops and everything else. I believe we're up to 24 students that we have coming for the program. Very excited again. We had the award ceremony yesterday over in Athol where Secretary Labor came out to give us the award. Again, just a great opportunity for the students. You know, there's a little bit of a change in that they've, they're really focusing on trying to have older students be a part of the program. But we're really looking forward to see what we have. It should be another great, great, great round. So we'll keep you updated as we go through. Yes, sir?
Mr. Barbara.
Is it 35? I was gonna say, 35 is the cutoff, correct?
Really old.
Yeah. I'm very happy to share that after all the kind of stops and starts we had on the spray booth that we have, we had to re, if you remember, we had to redo the bid that we had put out, some of the concerns that came from the HVAC union. We put that bid out this fall, it came through. We drew the final bids last Wednesday, I think, Tammy, somewhere around there, maybe last Thursday, I'm sorry. And local company, Pool and Construction, have Sterling, had the winning bid. It is within the range that we're working on. Remember, this goes back to funds that we actually have received a lot of these funds. The anonymous donation goes back a couple of years, Donnie Grant. Katie worked very strongly with those groups to try to make sure that we had ways to let them, that they understood what our concern was, that was taking us additional time. They allowed us to take that extra time so we still have those funds available to us. The plan is to shut down auto body a few weeks early, sometime in May, maybe, so we can start getting the, part of the bid is the removal of the old booths, but certainly just to get the shop prepped up so we can start doing those changes and everything else. But we hope to have the auto, we'll have a new booth for next year. All right. Quickly on MVP Academy, as you can see, those of you have come down at different times, you know, we are really getting down to the end. Quickly, I just took one kind of big, or had a big picture for each of the major spaces. But this is what we're looking at. That is now the common area that you remember when you walk into with the office space, even to the left there, I'll show you a picture in a little bit, the kitchenette is going in as well. Here's the house carpentry shop, looks great, you know, wood stacked, equipment in place. Floors are beautiful. Obviously, all the lighting and everything, all that's brand new and everything else. Electrical, I really want to focus on making sure we, I could show you all the booths because they're all put together. Of course, all the boxes of stuff that they put together, I was told they immediately took them out, but that's not the best picture there. But you can see all the booths, they're ready to go in electrical. Plumbing intentionally is the one that's left behind. Obviously, it's not an active program right now. Plus, it also allows us kind of a storage place as we woo things around back and forth. But this is where we're gonna be turning to next to wrap up the plumbing shop, get the floors done. All the board is up. I think it might, the finishers might have even gone through since this picture, I'm not sure. But we're doing very well, so pleased with that. Yes, sir?
Speaking of plumbing, last meeting, there was that grant that we weren't able to get into.
Yep.
Any updates on that?
Yes. Yeah, so Thursday, Social Commissioner Bennett came out with her team. They toured the facility, we walked them through. And I, what I will say is, I think it was a very positive tour. I think they were very impressed with what they had. You know, one thing, I, we had the students there. And in electrical, the MVP students, because, you know, we moved them along quickly through the frameworks, they're doing a lot of pretty good work there. And Ms. Bennett stopped, Cusher Bennett stopped to talk to a student, one of our students from Narragansett, and kind of said, you know, what are you doing? And the kid was able to boom, 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 rattled out immediately what he's doing. And then she said, well, what do you like, are you enjoying this? And the kid said, this is the best thing I've ever done. He said, I originally applied for Monty Tech, I did not get in. When this program was announced, I immediately applied for it. And he said, since I've been here, I've been the happiest I've ever been in school. I wanted to slip the kid 20 bucks for saying it, but it was fantastic. And she, Commissioner Bennett went in, the kids were eating lunch at the time, carpentry kids, and the same kind of stories from the kids. So the kids, you know, were the best selling piece. So I've got to follow up, I wanted to give her team time to have the conversation. I did speak to the CRCT liaison through DESI. She was very positive, she thought it was looking really good. So I think, somebody find some wood, but I think we're gonna be okay. Thanks. Yep.
So.
Yes, sir?
Just the MVP?
Yeah.
Finish first.
Yeah. So just real quick, we are still moving through. We are getting down towards the end. Again, this is a new picture, actually, just from today, bottom left, cabinet making kids putting in the kitchenette. We'll be putting in all the bathroom hardware, getting those all set. The one, I put ADA ramp, I shouldn't have put ADA ramp, I should have put ADA lifts. That's one of the pieces that's holding us up a little bit because it's where the stairs are. You know, obviously, pouring stairs in the winter is not the best thing. It is possible, we're gonna get that done. Furnishings will arrive, not next week, but the week after that. The furnishings will all be there. So we're really getting down to the end here, really excited. And like I said, when, oh, we might also, I gotta talk to Floyd. If anyone's coming to advisory next week, we're thinking we might open up MVP Academy that night because we think some of the construction tradesmen would want to see the work that the kids did down there. So if you are coming, thinking about coming to advisory, I'll get something out to you to let you know if that's definitely what the time would be and everything else. But yes, that's what we're gonna do. Did you have something else, Mr. Campbell, before I go?
No, no, I'm just saying, this looks great, everything's great. When is the opening for the kids to go down there?
That's, for the kids to be down there?
Yeah.
Well, the kids have been working down there, they've been helping doing the renovation. But to have them permanently down there, we're gonna do the kickoff, we're thinking either the first or second week of March. So that's the hope.
And that's a good thing. Obviously, you have a new thing going, MVP promoting it. And I think because the fact that you are also a member of the central chamber, you need to do a ribbon cutting to get that out to the business people that this is going on.
Yeah.
That's very vital.
A hundred percent.
The other thing is, you need to get the Sentinel down here. Because I see the Sentinel every day. I see all the other school, I see nothing on Monty Tech. They don't even cover Pittsburgh.
Yeah.
All right?
I was gonna say.
You need to make an official complaint.
Yeah.
Lowell Sun. I open up a Lowell logo, I go, this is not Lowell.
Hundred percent.
This is Drake it, unstable. Bill Ricker, where's, where's, where's Monty Tech? Where's Pittsburgh?
Yeah.
So you gotta complain. You have a marketing team, you said, you have a marketing?
Yes, we do. And we reach out to them all.
I see nothing, I see nothing.
I'm telling you, Bob, I, what I will tell you is, you've hit the nail on the head. I think they have two or three reporters total that do Pittsburgh. It is all Lowell news. And we beg the people to come down, I'm telling you.
You gotta go right to the publisher, okay?
Yeah.
Well, Showa Tech has Dan Phelps. Dan Phelps is their PR guy, he works for Lowell. He controls all the news release for schools.
Yes.
You're not coming here, right? You're reading the newspaper, right? So, I mean, they don't even cover.
Yes.
I haven't even, you know, once we hear anything about Monty Tech, especially, we add it back there, well, we price that we have, and then the principal, nothing's that. We have nothing.
Yeah. We have, we have better luck when we invite Gardener News, some of those folks. Pittsburgh just blows us off.
So I think message received.
You need a formal complaint for Superintendent of Pittsburgh High and Superintendent of Pittsburgh High, make a formal complaint to the publisher of the Lowell Sun saying, you know, I mean, I get electronics, like, people get in newspapers all the time, you know, my road reads it. The whole policy doesn't look like Monty Tech. Yeah? So you gotta do something, that's all I'm saying.
All right. All right. I'm gonna try to go through this very quickly, but it is important update, some of the legal stuff that's been going on. You, I've made you aware about how the Board of Ed has been having a subcommittee on vocational admissions over, it started back in November, I think is when it started, when they were meeting. This, just last week, they had two meetings. One was of the Vocational Admission Subcommittee. At that meeting, one of the folks from DESI did a presentation on data. The data that we've been begging them to give us, they won't give us, but they did a study on that. What their purpose was, was to look at the different selective criteria and make a determination on if selective criteria, certain selective criteria, had a significant disparate effect on students in terms of applying. At the end of that presentation, specifically what they spoke to is that academics as selective criteria and student interview demonstrated significant disparity, being that, you know, students of color were getting fewer points than the white students in general. At that meeting, the chair of the committee kind of said, well, it's clear that we have a pathway that we should be following. And the next morning was when they had the Board of Ed meeting. At that formal Board of Ed meeting, they basically proposed that they should put together a brand-new admissions policy determining how admissions would be, would play out, that they would present it at the February 25th board meeting, so this one's board meeting. They would then, assuming it goes through the board, they would then put it out for public comment. So they are in the process of developing a new policy. Obviously, in response, MAVA is saying, listen, we need to pull our membership and say, come up with something that we think would be the type of policy that we would like to have in place. And then present that and try to at least get some of our own thoughts and everything else into, into whatever that new policy's gonna be. I emphasize the next couple bullets there towards the bottom half, these are just things that have been talked about. There's nothing has been written yet or anything else like that. But certainly, some of the things they've talked about is, whatever new policy is created would not apply to the current kids who just are wrapping up admissions now. It would apply starting in the fall. So the policy that we have in place right now would stay in place. For now. The three things that people want to say that we still count, and they've actually kind of implied that we can count, we could still consider attendance, we could consider discipline, which, keep in mind, discipline is only those major, major incidents. So pretty much as it is, every kid already scores full points for discipline. But student interest, we, we get that some kids struggle with the interview, but that's how we would determine that a kid who's applying really is interested in coming to the school. So there's been some different discussions about what could be student interest. You know, somebody said, write a letter. And going back to the first slide, somebody said, well, no, the kid's just gonna throw it into AI and come up with this letter and send it out to us. So they're looking at things like, you know, that a kid comes on tour date. What, what ASABET does, they still do an interview. They don't score it. But what they say is, the fact that the kid was willing to show up at the school, go through the interview process, they're showing their interest in attending the school. So, so doing an interview, just not scoring it, still could be in play. So that's some of the things that they're considering. One of the things, very happily, what's being talked about through MAVA, is that the State House is very supportive of district agreements, that they want to make sure that with whatever policy there is, that disagreements are being honored in terms of apportionment quota, whatever you want to call it. The, it's also clear that while we're doing our piece, we also have to understand that the activist groups are doing their piece as well. And they're still gonna be pushing through the blind lottery. So that's a piece to make sure. Another piece there at the bottom is to make sure that whatever policy is put in place, that something is written that requires the sending districts to participate in the process, that they have to do tour date, that they have to, you know. What, one of the proposals is that the superintendent of the sending district, kind of like I have to sign a letter of attestation, that the sending district superintendent should have to sign a letter of attestation saying, yes, we are making sure that our kids are participating or have access to the process. So they definitely want to put more, because BSE heard and saw the data of how bad, we were not that bad. We all know there are some of our districts that don't participate. But there's other districts where their towns are blowing them off completely. So it's worse for some of the others. One of the big red lines, though, the concern is that whatever's put into place in terms of admission might get applied to exploratory, which would mean that basically it's a lottery to get into a shop. So a kid who goes through exploratory, you know, gets a 30 in exploratory, I'm just making up a number. Typically, that kid is not shown that they really need to be in that shop. If we do a lottery for that, and they throw over a kid's name, and they just pull names, and that kid gets into the shop. I will tell you, I'm not trying to badmouth anybody, but ASABET has done that, and it has not gone well. If you speak to the instructors at ASABET, they will tell you that it is not a good thing. So MAVA has said that if any policy, okay, we can talk about admissions, but don't even start talking about doing things like lotteries for shop placement and everything else. So we'll see what happens.
Mr. Campbell?
So I just want to make a comment here. At one time, I remember hearing, you know, different admission policies and rules and regulations about that. And I think there was a complaint of some sort that, well, if you do an open wide, you know, lottery, some districts are gonna get less kids, other districts are gonna get more kids. But my understanding, as I look at the chart, each town has a lottery based on K through two population, right? So let's say Pittsburgh is 88, last time I saw. So whatever, with 88, that's allowed for one year, that you have 225 kids applying. So, you know, and every community has that. Sterling, got it. So there's a number of kids already applied. So subjugate that lottery to that number. So 88 apply is the quota. And if there's 225, the lottery should be in that 225, and 88 gets picked out of that 225, rather than wide open. That way, district gets what they want.
Yeah.
That could be a compromise, all right, which is great, you know? So, you know, reference to that, I mean, it makes a big difference. Reference to, you know, hey, you got in the shop, if the kid doesn't show any interest, should not be there. That's not, should be a lottery. I'm totally against that.
Yeah.
They have to, when the, you know, say, hey, I just went to that shop, but I'll pick? No, no. The shop doesn't have to have you.
Absolutely.
Which is, I agree.
Yeah, yeah. All right. Oh, sorry.
Sorry. Could something like participation in, like, the summer camp programs?
Yes.
You know, the VIP programs and things like those?
Yeah.
Like, is that something that we can use to say, hey, you're showing active interest by coming to these, by doing these, by making time to participate in these?
Yeah, it could be. But one of the things, again, because they're changing the overall policy that applies to all districts.
Yeah.
You know, some districts don't have things like VIP or something like that.
That's why I was wondering if it was something that we use.
Correct. So, you know, they really, one of the things that became very clear is, even though they're telling us that we can still use attendance, they looked at all the different vocational application processes, how people scored attendance was hugely different from school to school in many cases. So even trying to decide, okay, if we're gonna set a number for attendance that, okay, a kid can have so many unexcused absences, there's some districts that literally, if you miss like three or four days, you were not, you were losing points for something like that. So it's gonna get a little interesting. How's that sound?
Super solid.
Yeah. Sorry.
Yes, no?
Oh, it's not working?
No.
Not working.
No?
Okay.
I did notice, I listened to some of that.
Yep.
And they mentioned that of the schools in the data set, 30 some odd were wall-to-wall, like us.
Yeah.
There's four or so that aren't wall-to-wall, they're inside of other.
Yeah, yeah.
They threw those out. And then of the 30 some odd, only 18, if I'm correct, had the population that mattered to the, to the data set.
It, yes.
So you're talking about a half of the actual schools in the, in the state they're using and saying that that's the data for the whole state.
Yeah.
But that's not really accurate.
No, I, so I did have, if anybody knows, Ally Trundy, our statics, statistics teacher. I had her take.
Oh, Miss Trundy, I went.
Yes, I had Miss Trundy watch the presentation. And needless to say, she had some serious concerns with the way it was done. I mean, they basically, the one thing is that, you know, I'll give them some positives. They went to look at ELL, and they realized the vast majority don't even have enough Ls to consider to be statistically relevant when they do a study. So they kind of walked away from, from the L population a little bit and everything else. But she definitely, and, and listen, I, I'll admit, I never took stats, but even I was like, eh, sounds a little weird. So, like, how they define significantly different was really very interesting.
Very small.
Very, very, I think it was .007 or something like that.
Yeah, they brought everything into a hundredth.
Yeah, yeah.
Everything was on a hundred scale. They said one, but they went to 100 decimal points.
Correct.
But were we part, was our data included in that set of those?
We don't, as far as we know, we don't know. Because again, they won't share data, and they didn't show the data to anybody that they used. So we don't really know.
Mr. Brooks?
Thank you. I'm just kind of responding to what Ms. Jones said about, you know, participation in activities prior to application and those kinds of things. One of the interesting things I picked up in, in watching these meetings is the notion that there's some inherent bias in the, in the measurements that we're using, that they said, for example, attendance has a bias if you're looking at low income, because low-income students are more likely to be absent, more than non-low-income students. For whatever reason, the parents can't get them there and so on. And so when you begin to talk about programs that Monty Tech is offering and measuring participation prior, is there an inherent bias towards students who are from more affluent families? Because the more affluent families are more involved in their education and therefore are making sure that these students are doing it versus students who aren't, or English, and then again, English language learners. And so it's been interesting to watch because, I mean, there's some logic to what you're saying. It makes sense. Yeah, you, that's showing a sign of interest. But are you then, is there a bias against students who just have never had that opportunity?
Or can't afford the opportunity.
Or can't afford the, correct, correct. So, that's all. Thank you.
Yeah, no, absolutely. All right. So a couple other just legislative things that just want to make sure everybody knew about. Good news is, in terms of some of the things, is funding capital skills. They did pass some, or they do have legislation to address that. Again, that's, that provides a lot of programs, us many times over, in terms of what we're doing. But also in terms of building, specifically for vocational schools, allowing them to have better reimbursement rates for construction projects. The idea being of trying to get schools to expand their size and everything else by giving significant, I believe there's even some, this one, particular one, has giving an increase of 20 points. I think they're looking at going up to even as high as an increase of 70 percentage points in terms of reimbursement rates. But again, this is only in the State House, it hasn't been passed or anything else like that. So, but it's nice to have. Another thing is talking about, I already mentioned to you, in terms of a legislation that requires the sending district to take more responsibility to make sure they're getting kids here, participating, and that the superintendent potentially having to sign something for attestation. Let's see. Okay, so this is, another piece of legislation is out there is by Mr. Repsmore in Scanlon. Literally would, if passed, I would be shocked if it passes, to be pretty honest with you, literally would say that individual school committees determine the admissions process, and that's it. It basically would remove the state from being able to be a part of that decision. Again, I don't know if that one really has a chance, but anyhow. There are three different lottery bills. One of them is a modified lottery, which is One of them is a modified lottery, which is kind of what we've been talking about already, where basically you can consider attendance and discipline, so a threshold would be determined. It's kind of what DESI is probably looking at doing right now, the BSE is looking at doing right now. And if, as long as you met that threshold, whatever it is, your name gets to be put into the lottery. So there's a modified lottery. There's a weighted lottery, which would allow, if you're part of the special population, so if you're a student of color, special ed, you come with a disadvantage, you would be, you would get more balls, for lack of a better phrase, thrown in to the lottery than the other students. All right? So it's specifically to support the weighted students. I don't think, I don't know, it's, it's not for the special populations, but Worcester, apparently Worcester Tech is now using a weighted lottery, but they're weighting in terms of scoring a little bit for the regular old criteria in a way. And last but not least, there is one bill that's just old school, well, old school because it's been up there for the last two or three years, just an old school, just a blind lottery bill. So there are three admissions bills out there. Again, here's, I'm sorry, this is where the capital skills grant, I mentioned that. And again, these lab modernization grants, so that's what we use to get us off the ground for MVP Academy. That was specifically to approve a space or anything like this. What they're now talking about, looking at our model, and I'm going to say that, I think they're motivated by the model that we put in place, they are considering that for lab modernization, you could use it specifically for leases. You could use it to potentially buy a building, because there's people, there's a lot of districts that say, there's a place right, right off campus that if we owned, we could do something with it. So they're really, and I, again, I take pride, and we should all take pride, that I think they're being motivated that we're, what we're doing, the journey that we're on. So again, all that's just in there, nothing has been passed, and don't forget, it's just beginning of the year, so everything's been thrown on the docket, who knows? But we met with Tammy, and I meet with John and Julie, just to go through the agenda. He did ask if quickly I could go through, obviously, there's a lot of talk about issues with ICE and interactions that might happen with schools and everything else. DESI has put out, we've got a process through our own school lawyers, we've spoken with them, but just in case everybody, if you don't know, specifically what's supposed to happen is if ICE were to show up, which obviously, where we're located in a gateway city, there's a chance that it might happen. The process is basically that we, I'm called, I'm the one who speaks with the folks that would be there. We ask for a specific warrant, it needs to be a judicial warrant that's signed by a judge, it can't just be a piece of paper saying, we're ICE and we're here. From what I've, I've only heard of one, and I don't even know what district it was, I've heard of one situation that ICE did, apparently, allegedly, went to a school, they asked for the warrant, they did not have a judicial warrant, and they just left. It's, it's not like they're barging in and trying to fight in and everything else. What is a reality is this, we have immigrant students and immigrant families, we are seeing drops in attendance because we think there are students who don't want to come in because of this concern. So this is a real concern. We're working, Vicki and the counselors, deans, we're all working with these families, double checking, making sure that things are being very supportive as, are as supportive as we can. The key thing that you also have to know is that FERPA, basically, if they ask for information, if ICE comes up, FERPA limits what we can provide. The one thing that we might want to take a look at at some point, and it would be a policy situation, there's something called directory information. Directory information is very generic, it's on the right side, about middle of the way down. It includes things like a student's name, phone number, grade level. If the family hasn't opted out, this information can be given out. So one of the things they are sharing, so what we mostly see it for is if someone, if a family doesn't want their child's picture put into the newspaper, their child doesn't want to get the calls from the military recruiters, they sign and opt out, they opt out, and that means this information can't go out. I don't think anyone ever thought about, okay, does this, you know, how does that play out if ICE shows up or something like that? So I think we might want to have some conversations. I did look Brookline Public Schools, they had something that's a little bit more hefty when it came to this, but just something to think about. In general, FERPA protects this, it protects the families and everything else, but something to consider.
What's kind of interesting is FERPA may not be restricting the names, but technically that's personal information under a number of different regulatory.
Correct. Yeah, the whole PII piece is, is the big piece, exactly. Well, and, and some of it, I mean, some of the definitions include address in, in the, in the, in the directory information and everything else, so it's scary.
Mr. Olson.
Yeah, just, I mean, I'm, this is prior to Tom's time, but I know we've had legal counsel do some other work on this previously before about what's in our public meeting comments about students' awards, providing names of students to members of the community, so it's probably another refresh, at least back through that.
Yeah.
But we did spend some, some time and money, at least, to get a ruling on how best to handle that.
Sure.
So, pretty sure that was through K.
Okay. Yeah, we'll follow.
Mr. Barrett.
Was that, I don't know, like, the skills USA award stuff, is that, is that what you were talking about?
It was part of that, I mean, there used to be a, a policy or practice here, they actually would give out all the student names and contact information so school committee could know who was their constituents, that was the big first start, and that was like, oh, that was really not a cool thing. And then it sort of got to, okay, well, what's really the right information if somebody hasn't provided, that their information be shared, that they're here or not? I don't know that we've taken it to that level, we still, you know, different, different other groups, I know groups that we're in, you know, where, you know, first name, no last name, only type of thing, because you don't want that connected association unless somebody wants it, but there's other ways to attract, to do it that other places do.
And last but not least, we were, we're making some modifications. Katie and Melissa Lord and, you know, myself, we, we had some conversation. So what we really wanted to try to do is taking a look at what we're doing with superintendent's dinner and everything else. And, you know, last year, it, it was a smaller event, but still very strong, very successful. But we also want to try to get a different group that might want to be willing to come out. So there's going to be a theme to it, the theme's going to be casino night, and there will be casino games and everything else, make it a little bit more interactive, a little bit more fun, there'll be some music there as well. No, it's not real money, but there will be awards for people who, you know, do well and everything else. We're going to do it over at the Colonial Hotel, over at Gardner, and I'll be perfectly honest, one of the things we're trying to do is we're trying to make sure that the money that's coming in is going to the students. You know, the cost of, I keep hearing stories about some of the things that were built around here before I came to Monty Tech, and the sheer amount of money that was going into the decorations as opposed to going to scholarships. So we really are trying to get that to be the bigger focus. We think it's going to be a fun night, a great night, obviously, anyone who's able to come on Saturday, April 5th, would be fantastic, we'll keep you updated on that. And I think that's it for me.
Mr. Olson.
In lieu of the dinner, or?
Yep. No, there's still a dinner, yeah, but, but also even the, what I'll say is the dinner's going to be, what's a good word, simpler? I don't know, what word do you want to use, Katie?
Not a lot of course, it was traditional.
Yeah.
Cost efficient.
Yeah, there you go. Money to the kids, money to the kids, that's what we wanted to do.
Item 2B, out-of-state field trip, do we have a motion for that? Mr. Olson.
Move the district committee vote to approve an out-of-state field trip for 22 juniors from Calumary to travel to Johnsonville University of Rhodes, Rhode Island, to tour the culinary program in March 2025. No passes.
Mrs. Versad, seconds, discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Motion carries. Mrs. Carlson, principal's report. I guess we'll start with the student reps' report. It's here. Nope.
So, good evening, everyone. So just last week, we did our access testing. Taryn DeVito, who is our assessment coordinator, also with Frances Freo, our VEL instructor, tested a total of 14 students. So as you know, our video, we do testing, the access testing is essentially testing students who are English language learners, and it's tested them in the areas of writing, listening, speaking, and reading, to gauge their language proficiency. And, and with that information, obviously, we want to ensure that students are properly placed, they're getting the supports that are necessary. And also to ensure that we continue and stay up to date with our PD offerings, to ensure that our content, teachers are also getting the necessary support in order to support the students that are in that classroom. We just brought up our third VIP session that ran from January 9th through the 30th. We had a total of 200 incoming students participate. I know I say this every single time we talk about, you know, VIP and open house system, again, Chrissy Leany continues to do just an up and a job, ensuring that this is well-organized communication with our sending districts. You see that Tamsa participated in this session, as you know, there are from time to time, there are students aren't able to come during their schedule sessions, and she really works very closely with those districts and really those families to ensure that students are able to attend. As far as our participating programs, we continue to grow with a number of teachers and programs that we're able to offer from time to time. And as you know, many of our teachers are taking courses, have small children at home, just have other things going on, or they're, they're, they're willing to teach during the day and to also stay after school to continue, again, to provide opportunities for students to kind of learn about our programs. We also have, and this has been happening more and more, you'll notice here, well, we have some of our veteran teachers, and then we have first-year teachers that are just kind of jump up, wanting to do this, which I think is absolutely fantastic. We have some of our cafeteria folks, too, that have been phenomenal, helping with the culinary program as well, they've done it with some of our summer programs, so it's just a great, great, great group of people that are doing that.
Mrs. Carlson.
Yes.
Mr. Campbell has a question.
Moving back to your VIP.
Yeah.
How do you offer the VIP program to any of your district talent to participate? Has anybody rejected it?
It goes to the family, so every, the parents get.
You don't close the school, you go to the parents?
Correct. And the schools, too, the schools highlighted as well, but they, there are, there are emails and emails that go out to the, to the parents. Like, I, I'm a parent of a middle schooler, and I get the email, my personal email, I get VIP, it's coming to your town. Chrissy does now stay the job highlighting and also join our open houses, it's on our website, so that stuff is out for students.
So I'm just saying, Athol and Pittsburgh are ahead of them, not sending their kids to the tour and everything, except for fact that the kids go on the tour.
Yes, yes, so we, so the bus will pick up the students at, at their school, at the moment, the parents do have to pick the students, we don't provide transportation back to their schools, but we give the transportation in, the students here. So typically, the students pick the students up.
Transportation is provided back to the school.
Yeah. Oh, that's, sorry, oh, we do have to run it back, go ahead, sorry.
That's okay. My daughter, my daughter just did it. So, so we're in Athby, so she did it last time, so she had the opportunity to either get her back to Hawthorne, Brooklyn, Townsend. I ended up picking her up at Sizer, because it's closer to our house, but we, she got picked up from here, and they dragged her back to their school.
So how do they get to here?
From the school, the sending school.
So they pick them up?
Yep. Their bus both ways.
Yeah. And especially, right, at dismissal time, I don't want to get the students here, most parents are working, so the pickup is often, so often, we definitely have parents come as well. Today, right now, we've had over 100 of our Monty Tech students that have volunteered to stay after school to help with our VIP program. Chrissy Leany just started doing, if you scroll, if you could show the, so she's giving students that little star, too, to add to their land, really highlighting those students that really often serve those students. And as we know, the students love to hear from the adults, but our students are the best marketing that we have in this entire school, because they do want to hear from their fellow colleagues in the upperclassmen as well. And also, again, just some of the feedback, I don't need to read that to you, but again, it's just so great to hear the feedback, parents and students as they're walking toward building, and even emails, like Chrissy's getting after the fact, thanking her at Monty Tech, just for the opportunity and the experience that was available for the students, too. So when you have a moment, if you want to read that, that is great. I saw Patriot State Competition, Rich Duncan, and of course, Sergeant Dillon and Mickelson. You'll notice the students have participated. For the bratzy team, we received second and third place, you'll see the highlighted there of the teams, and also first place gold for the Friggin', and that was the, the open team that we have that Mr. Duncan runs as well. So again, that was a huge success of, of our students, too, bringing, bringing home some rewards as well. So, another little highlight there. And then just some upcoming events, today we had a group of 60-something students visit on Tuesday Community College for the student day, which was a huge success, too. And again, we continue next week, we do have time this week, we'll be celebrating, so student council has been phenomenal, but really just, we try to give students a moment, certainly be present at Michael within our community and show some school spirit. So, and then we have school vacation, that I think we're all very ready for. So, that's it. Next, you will see you have the student enrollment reports. And last but not least, our school year 25, 26 calendar. As you know, every year, as we draft the calendar, we make sure we present it during the, the meeting, we mail it out to staff to get feedback from everyone, make them more eyes given in the calendar, the better it is just to make sure that everyone looks at that, so.
On that topic, do we have a motion? Mr. Olson moves. Do we have a second?
Second.
Mrs. Swenson, seconds, discussion. Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Motion carries. Personnel, 4A retirements, there are two, they're in your packet, if there's any questions, I'm sure Mrs. Crockett could answer them. No?
Wow.
What's that?
You have them printed.
Yeah, I do. Susan Wilson, mathematics instructor, and Eileen Kelly, cafeteria worker. Eileen's been here 24 years.
Yeah, Ellen.
We have one resignation, Alyssa Wilbur, part-time faculty, she's been here a year. And we have one appointment, Mary Roth from Athol, who's been appointed Director of Continuing Education with a salary of $85,000 effective February 3rd. Any questions for Mrs. Crockett or the superintendent? Mr. Campbell.
On the new, I was curious, how many applicants do you get for the position? Right off the top? I have, we got a number, I want to say 15? It was good, it was, listen, we, we can't, we can't get five people to apply for a history teacher, so we get double digits or something, we're pretty happy.
And they're from in district, even better.
Yeah, they are.
Okay. Reports by subcommittees, Mrs. Swenson.
Now, we can see in front of the policies. There was a policy, well, for those that read it, basically, what we were doing is, you have it, read it.
Oh. It says, move that the district committee approve for first reading AC nondiscrimination and ACA nondiscrimination on the basis of gender, and removal of outdated, redundant, or differently incorporated policies, ACV harassment, ACD discrimination on the basis of gender, and ACDF, respectful interpersonal human relations, as these policies are included in the updated policy AC.
Okay. A motion.
So, so you're making a motion, do we have a second for that?
Second.
Mrs. Jones, says second, discussion. Yes, Mr. Olson?
Is that first reading or second reading? First reading?
First. Yeah, it doesn't do that.
Oh, it doesn't say it?
No.
It should be for the first reading.
Oh, yes, it does, yes, it does, sorry.
Can you use glasses?
I just need to put them on, but I can't read them when they're on. All right, any other questions or discussion?
I mean, I guess my opinion is I'd like to pass over it until we can actually review them as a group. I know I did see it before, but unless there's a rush to get them on, can we put them on the next meeting, when we can actually look at them?
Fine, admit it, I read them on there already.
Yeah. Unless, I mean, it's just me, but.
Just, just.
It's just me, I can abstain, everybody else is good, it's fine, but.
Go to the will of whatever.
Well, well, we have a motion and a second on the floor, so unless you want to remove it.
Not really. Not really.
We could bring it up for a vote, and we can say all in favor.
Well, we got a second reading coming up, we can only discuss that, too.
All right. Any other questions before I call a vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Mr. Olson, Mr. Versad, oh, and Mr. Malika. Thank you. Motion carries. 5B, capital improvements, Mr. Swenson.
No meeting.
Alrighty, so we can move on to 5C, workforce, Mr. Olson.
No report.
All right. 5D, student advisory, Mr. Barber.
We haven't met, but we will be in March. Be interesting that the discussion of AI, that was one of the last topics of the last student advisory, so we'll report that we're on it and don't try it.
Item 5E, school graduation gift, subcommittee, Mr. Turigny.
As for the graduation gift, there's been no meeting. There will be one in, in April. You just need one meeting a year. The fund, I think, is at 525 or 550.
550.
And donations are welcome.
And your goal is, was it a thousand?
A thousand.
Financial planning, Mr. Olson?
Whoops.
Oh, sorry.
We forgot the dance.
The what?
The dance.
Oh, that's, that's item G. I'll get that.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Mr. Olson, financial planning?
So yes, our delay in starting this evening was due to the financial planning subcommittee who met prior to this meeting, did our first review over the FY '25, FY '26 budget. We agreed in our missing member from tonight, we'll also make it, we're going to meet again next Wednesday to go another step deeper into that preliminary budget with some updates. So we are working on a budget. The hope here and the intention is we need to get this preliminary one of these to approve through subcommittee so we can get it out for our March meeting. So we'll have our public hearing in March to go through that budget. So anybody who wants to enjoy more numbers and finance, finance subcommittee, next Wednesday, 6:30 PM, Culinary Conference Room, after the vocational dinner.
And Dr. Turigny, fundraising, the dance subcommittee.
Yes, we were supposed to have a meeting last month, but everybody had, there wasn't a quorum, and everybody had excellent excuses why they could not attend, so that's what it is. But I did have, I have looked at the cafeteria, and it looks, looks like the most we can have with the dance floor is about 240 people. I also had a meeting with graphics to design a pamphlet. I'm still in that process. There's a question that has cropped up, and that is, my original idea was not to have a, not to charge, but I think at this point, we have to charge a nominal fee during this. I'm not sure what the fee is going to be, but I've been mulling this over, and I really think, and the other issue I'm mulling over is that this originally was for school committee, not school committee, the school employees of the school and the school committee. And I originally was going to invite the mayor of Pittsburgh and the town manager of Westminster, because the school is on both properties. A friend of mine got a hold of this and basically says, well, aren't you going to invite the mayor of Gardner? And now it became, now it's becoming a political thing. So needless to say, I'm unsure what we're going to do. I think we will have roughly 250 tickets, first come, first served. That's the only way I can see. Invite the mayors and the town managers, and whoever gets a ticket, there, it's golden. I do have a list of the music here, if people are interesting, interested, I should say. And I have a meeting with John Malika during school vacation. He has a, a great collection of 45s and can meet some of these, and I have a collection, too. I'm sure, I'm sure we can cobble up with music that would be part of the 1950s and early 60s, and...
Is this a list of music you have, or music you're looking for?
Music I am looking for right now. Okay. And I would tend to think that's it for now.
Thank you, Dr. Turigny. 6A, financial statements are in the packet. If there's any questions, Mrs. Crockett's here. All right. Item 6B, award of bid number 202503, furnish and install automotive spray booth. Do we have a motion for that?
Mr. Chair, move the district committee aboard the contract for furnishing and installation and automotive spray booth to Peeling? 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 Pooling? Pooling? Okay. Construction in Sterling, Mass. in the amount of $739,900. Funds will be distributed from the following accounts. Anonymous donation of $180,330, 30. WCTF Donna Lee Grant for $340,100. Perkins FY, $100,000. And number 1378 instructional equipment for $119,470.
Do we have a second?
Sure.
Mr. Versad, seconds, discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Motion carries. Acceptance of donation 6C. What is this one? Sorry. All right. Would someone like to make the motion on this one? Eric, go ahead.
Move the district committee accept a donation from Taylor Rhodes of sockets, wrenches, pneumatic tools, et cetera, with an estimated value of $300 for the automotive technology program.
Do we have a second for that?
Second.
Mrs. Jones, seconds, discussion. Mr. Barber?
Who is Taylor Rhodes?
I think he just showed, I think he just showed up and made the donation, because what it was, Mrs. LaRose came down and said, I guess the guy just donated, I don't know anything about him, but I just found out about him myself.
Dr. Otto Formers, don't know.
Yeah, don't know.
Okay.
Any other?
Excellent.
Any other questions? No? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Motion carries. Communications, 7A, teachers informational proposals, none were submitted in advance, and I see no teachers here, so I'm going to assume that's a no. School committee chairman's report, I don't have one, and John's not here, so. School committee information proposals, none were submitted in advance to the meeting. School committee comments, I'm going to start on my left.
Just as a point of information, because I have to go back and check on a couple of things myself, the, where we're using board docs for our meetings and agendas and everything else, you can go back in time, even to last year, and look up, and what's helpful is that the documents that are presented at the meetings are still on file there, so I found that to be very, very useful periodically.
Have I been going to your basement in the filing cabinet?
Yeah, because I don't have a file cabinet anymore.
I think I still have three. We need to move all the packets in.
You'd be surprised at the stuff that I threw out a few years ago. Yeah, I mean, I had two $4, $5 file cabinets full of stuff from here. That happened, I think from 2000, happens to still be around, I don't know when. Also, for those that are here for policy, the policy meeting's going to be on February 10th in a culinary conference room, which is a Monday. You don't know. You can't.
I have bad news for you. I might, I might be able to...
We're going to start you on Saturday mornings. No, we typically would meet on a Wednesday, but because of the advisory and now finance, we couldn't do it, so. We're still looking, oh, we're still looking for another person for policy, because Barbara Reynolds has resigned for policy.
So if there's anyone who wants to be tortured, contact Diane.
Jeez, thanks, Eric.
I'm not a policy.
Are you going to be on the policy?
No.
Oh, that'd be funny.
I have to do that at work enough, though, thank you. Mrs. Jones?
I just wanted to thank everyone for the cards and the roses. My father passed away right before Christmas, so thank you so much. It was, it was really a blessing to us, and especially to my kids, because two of my girls go here, so a lot of things were signed, like, from your Monty Tech family. It was nice, so thank you.
Mrs. Smith?
I'm upset, thank you.
Dr. Turigny?
Nothing, thank you.
John?
I'll say.
Ross?
MASC Division 8, which is the vocational division for the state, met at Smith Vocational two weeks ago, I suppose, on a Saturday morning. Mostly discussion about missions and tours of school, just to see what Smith Vocational is all about. The next meeting, remember, we're, it will show up on the MASC website, will be at Tri County on, on March 1. If people are interested in all the other policies, just watch the MASC website, or I could let Julie know, she could send over the, the, the.
Excellent. Thank you. Mrs. Sessis?
You say tomorrow?
All right. Eric?
I'm sure my senior is hoping that you write things. But by having your children come and learn, absolutely.
Cardinal will cancel, probably.
Some of them are.
I just want to say, I went to a garden high school basketball game last week and ran into a student, a student from here, a freshman, and I guess they just assigned their trades. And I have run into this student a couple times and asked, how are things going? And I said, how are things going? And the student was absolutely being this, he got into the trade that he wanted, it was his first choice, and, I mean, I can't tell you how happy he looked, and that made the last year all worth it. So, thank you.
And we will do the usual freshman placement report for the March meeting, so we'll build it all.
Mr. Campbell?
Yeah, just a couple quick things, and I still, Superintendent, I'm definitely going to, how I'm also, I get the paper every day, that, you know, it's a shame, it's a great school, you know, everybody has a market, even the school even does itself, to save some money, it's all the things you do. The other good thing is, myself and Mr. Hurley, we got a...
Don't we drag me into this, Bob?
We got a few rotary members. And in the past, we've always been assist, Monty Tech, which has a lot of opportunities for scholarship, but I mean, Pittsburgh, Pittsburgh took over, Pittsburgh, I don't know, took over from Monty Tech.
I think Monty Brock did.
Oh, Monty Brock, I'm sorry. There's a combination of Pittsburgh and Lancaster Rotary. So each rotary club has, you know, opportunity to help and assist scholarship for the students and whatever. And Superintendent, in terms of the money they raise in scholarships, it's a huge event, you know, the old beef, you know, business education, and it was like, we act in 90, it's big, 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 you know? So one of the things, Monty Tech's been always generous, I don't know, Superintendent, and, you know, the, Mr. Rob, it was the vocational, they've always contributed to our cause in terms of donations from the things that they make here. And some of the leftovers, Superintendent's there, our country, or, you know, the folks that make, that person make. So what we're looking at is every year, again, with generosity, and Monty Tech is perfectly centrally located for our annual Super Bowl brunch. We have Super Bowl brunch here at 8:30 till noon time, and prices like, seniors, it's $15, $19. And it's a brunch, all the way up, we set it up just like the way they do it at the advisory, which is a great venue to copy from there. And it's a great turnout, we've had lowest 500 to 700 people, all throughout the community, we advertise it. Believe it or not, well sung, as an ad that I asked to put in, it's running all week, all right? And every other opportunity that you get, they just do it. So it's a great venue. The money we use is for nonprofit agencies, people in charities, you know, we send them off. So this Sunday, weather permitting, we're going to, weather permitting, please come on down, 8:30 to 12 o'clock, a great little thing, we have, you know, side auction and basket. This is our number one, you know, eight, nine, so if someone's going to just help us up on break.
Yeah.
We'll see that.
Mr. Versad?
Yeah, I just wanted to suggest or float out the idea of contingency plan for board docs being down. I think that meeting was not unusual, you know, it's, yes, parents could be involved with that meeting, but we only have to be like, board docs, so.
Board docs is not down. My Wi-Fi system is down.
Okay.
They have.
Maybe next time, board docs is down. What do we do if we don't have access to our agendas and our materials, you want to mean?
Yeah, they should give us some packets.
New old-fashioned blue sheets.
I used to love those packets coming every week.
Correspondence and reports, there are none. All in favor?
Aye.
Tom, there's 135 schools closed right now, just letting you know.
Yeah.
They're closed down.
It's not snowing?
You have a better way to the morning? You should do early morning, maybe.